This is a consent agenda this evening, so unless you have an objection to anything or feel like you want to break anything out, let us know as we get into that specific area and we'll be certainly glad to modify the consent agenda to accommodate your request. First order of business is public comments. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the board? Just indicate your name, relive. Move on to building program report, and this is Mr. Perzuie, our director of facilities.
There, is that better?
Yes.
Good evening, members of the board, audience. You all received my report that I sent out last Friday. I have it here in front of me. I'll go over some quick things and then I'll open it up to questions. So, as far as summer projects go, it was a little light this summer because of the RHVAC bids being thrown out. That was going to be a very significant part of my summer that ended up not happening. Hopefully it'll happen next summer. But we did have some major projects going on. The Far Sea Baseball Field Drainage Project's underway. I don't know if you've driven by the high school lately. They're hard at work over there. Really, they have laser leveled the infield and the rain we got over the weekend, there wasn't one puddle on the infield. It was all drained off to the side already, so it's already starting to work. But they have a considerable amount of work left to do of installing all the drainage piping along the edges of the infield and in the outfield into the two catch basins on the side of the field. So, that project, sort of an open-ended completion date. The drainage work should be done probably at the end of September, and as I stated in my report, we just have to make a determination as to planting the grass and the sod because there is no water source for that athletic field. So I have no way to water large sections of grass and sod. So, the contractors recommending cooler temperatures, you know, end of September, beginning of October, would be ideal, and that's sort of where we're going anyway. So, we'll make that determination when the weather, we see what the weather's like when the drainage is complete. The roof project at the senior high school is underway. That's scheduled to be completed by the second week of September. Once that project's completed, all of our roofs in the district will be under warranty. So that's, that's pretty good news for us in case we have any kind of leaks or damage or anything. We're covered for that. They're at about 20% completion now, and all the loud, noisy, disruptive work that they needed to do was taken care of before the students came back, so that was, and also the section of the roof right by the main entrance, they were able to complete. I think they finished that up at the end of last week, so there's no issue with traffic flow for school pickup or drop-off in the front of the building.
The only place next to it with an issue, no issue with traffic.
Well, I wouldn't say that. I've tried to leave that building at 2:30 in the afternoon sometimes, and it's not, it's not fun. So, I also put in there just about the HVAC upgrades because although the Lorraine and Jackson Wall noon event project was pushed back till next summer, we are still going forward with the junior high chiller. Those specifications are complete. I believe, I'm just waiting for the warranty information from Tremco because KCBA wants to include that in the specs because there are roof penetrations involved, because that, a lot of that equipment's mounted on the roof, the cooling tower. So, that could go on the street as early as the end of this week or most likely next week, forbid. And the anticipated start time for that would be in mid-October when the system shuts down. The, we're, as I think I said last week or yesterday, we're dragging the junior high chiller right now, kicking and screaming into October. It's not cooperating very well. My HVAC mechanic's over there almost every day because it's tripping, it's resetting, low oil. There's, if we were not replacing that, it would require a substantial amount of work to get that unit where he wasn't having to baby it along until October. District-wide, I put down here some things. Lorraine got some carpeting in the classroom in the main office suite. I did make an admission there. Jackson Wall did too. Jackson Wall got, I think, five classrooms carpeted and the principal's office carpeted. We did a substantial amount of VCT replacement in the second floor of the senior high school, basically entire wings. And we also did the carpeting in the main office, guidance office in the art room over at Reifton. Owatton Creek, the installation of the fence along the driveway by the playground. I was thinking that was going to be completed by today. It's not. The posts are up, but the fence isn't, but I've been in contact with the contractor that will be done before school starts. Routine summer maintenance and cleaning's being performed district-wide, which I can talk about a little bit more or answer your questions. The one thing I would like to publicly point out in my report is the work that Eric Orsak did and his staff with refinishing our gym floors. I don't know if the pitchers in my report did it justice, but really going there and taking a look at it, they really did an excellent job. Basically, they sand the top coat of finish on the gym floor and they reapply one or two coats of gym floor finish, and they did a fantastic job. I think it looks great, and they saved the district a couple thousand dollars a gym by doing that. If we had a floor contractor do that, it would've cost probably, you know, anywhere between $1,500 and $2,000 per gym to do that. So, I would like to give him a little shout-out for that because that's something that not every school district can do in-house. We had our annual safety and professional development training on the 14th. Right now, we don't have any open positions. I do have my new maintenance position that I've filled out the personal requisition form, you know, dealing with HR to get that moving along, to get that extra maintenance position because that should help a lot with my work orders. I know you had sent me the email this afternoon. We are steadily catching up. I've been going through the work order system, printing out reports for each building and going and verifying, you know, what was done and what wasn't done. We have, we have some old work orders that were done and were never closed out, were never marked as completed, but we have a couple that are old and are still out there. So, I'm going through that process right now. I did call in some reinforcements. A lot of our open work orders are plumbing, and I have one plumber for, you know, almost a million square feet, seven buildings. That's a lot. That, that trade has a lot of things to deal with, you know. If you think of the amount of bathrooms just in the high school alone, and then, you know, go down the line for all the buildings. So I do have a contractor assisting me with some of those, some of those items. So, I'm hoping to, with, with the process that I'm working through now and the addition of another person, to be able to catch up more on the work orders and be a little bit more responsive on my end, communicative of, you know, work orders and their statuses with the people who request them. So... Lastly, there's, we had no demand response events. I don't know if demand response is the agreement we have with First Energy. On high degree days, when they're worried about outages and stuff like that, they'll call an event, and we scale back our energy usage. We shut down air conditionings. It's, the program's only in the senior high school and the junior high school because they're the only accounts large enough to qualify for the program. But a lot of times, we'll just do it energy wa, district-wide because they do also factor in the, our rate on the highest degree days of the year. So it's in our best interest to shed as much load as we can when those events happen. So, we didn't have any of those events, believe it or not, this summer, even with all the hot days. I was kind of surprised by that, but we did have, usually when we don't have an event, they make us run a test, and we had that test on July 25th, and we performed as requested and required. We dropped the amount of load we were supposed to. So, that's about it for my report. So, ready for any questions or discussions that you guys would like?
So, Rob, thank you for the information and the proof of the report. The one thing I had a question was, I had a chance to go by Owatton Creek looking for that effluent fence, which we've discussed, which is good to know. It's not there, it just wasn't my imagination.
Right.
The mulch that's in place right now looks very similar to the mulch we saw earlier.
Because it is. We haven't got that delivered yet. That's happening towards the end of this week.
Yeah, because the rubber pads are also showing, so I think we have to look at that.
Yeah, we're, yeah, the purchase order was signed off on, we use River Valley, River Valley, something. Organics, I think, actually is their name. So, that's where we get the wood mulch from, and we get them in all the elementary schools.
So all the elementary schools still have to be coming out?
Yes, yes.
What's the schedule you think of that right now?
Last I spoke with him, it was supposed to be this week, so I had to call out to him actually today, say, you know, this week's going by faster than, I believe, not last year, but two years ago, they actually did it the first week of school, and it was something I had to work with the principals about to make sure that they could get into the playgrounds and things of that nature. So, something I'm working on.
Thank you. Mr. Perzuie, I have three items just to follow up on. We had a really good facilities meeting last night, and I wondered if you, perhaps you and Mr. Brady could just talk about the McClure presentations, just to give an overview.
The McClure company works on efficiencies and looking for operational ways to save money for the district or by making improvements that are self-funded or reduce the cost. So for example, what we're looking at is the wrapping of the building, meaning the windows, the walls, the treatments, they're getting insulated. We're looking at pipelines, insulation. They're going, we're going to engage them right now, the new costs. They're going to do an initial survey for us to see what kind of improvements are available. Following that, they're going to come back to us with their findings, and then we're going to go forward and see if we want to go forward with them, if they think further. But the goal is to look for ways that we can either improve our systems or, and/or reduce costs. For example, they're going to explore whether solar fields or solar installations on some of the roofs of the buildings would generate any kind of cost savings for us and how that method would work. One thing that Alyssa, the individual who represented McClure indicated was, under current program, typically a school district, because we are a tax-exempt organization, will lease the materials from McClure, who can then generate tax deferment, and then that helps to fund some of it while we're paying lease rates for it, for example. So, we're going to be meeting again on September 19th. By that time, McClure will have gone and done a survey, completed a survey of our facilities to look for any kind of savings they could identify. This is actually going to be hand-in-hand or possibly in addition to the KCBA analysis that we have. We're going to pretty much going to look against the KCBA to see if similar things were identified, less things were identified, or more things were identified. So it's kind of a checks-and-balance also that we're going to develop.
They'll be coming August 29th, by the way. I was in communication with Alyssa this morning via email, so I'll be walking her around and providing her the information she needs to get the information she needs. So...
Mr. Perzuie, what percentage do we have solar, solar lighting in the Roppongari district? What percentage would you say?
Solar lighting? Probably zero.
Zero?
The only lighting we, the only, we have LED lights. We have LED light. We've done everything. I think Owatton's the only outstanding place.
Owatton was, I'd say probably, I mean, probably honestly close to maybe 50% incompatible with LEDs. Some areas in Reifton and a few areas in the high school, other than that the district's LED. Solar-powered lights, I don't believe.
That would, the only solar we're using right now, Pat, would be what we're generating on Owatton's roofs. That would power those lights. But we do not have, for example, sometimes you'll see some shopping malls or other type of areas where they have a solar panel on top of a light fixture outside. We don't have them at our facilities at this time.
Is there anything in the planning that we might do because of cost savings?
Well, we have, we have to look at cost for those. I mean, that's something that would come through an analysis from an electrical engineer, I mean, this organization, that would say, okay, I mean, we had them replace a lot of other fixtures with LED lights, so maybe that would be something to look at. We'd have to see how long that light is. For example, we had the stadium examined for whether it was cost beneficial to change those lights out, and it was actually not, to go to a LED light structure. So it really comes down to each individual case by itself to look at. So maybe that's something, Rob, you can look into.
Okay.
Have we gotten any more cameras on the buses for when, like when they put out the sod, the...
He would not be involved in that. He's in facilities. Oh, we have, all our buses now have cameras.
Oh, great.
I'll clarify that. Because we had some standard definition cameras, we tested the standard definition spot-on, and visibility of license plate is poor, so we're going to have to reorder, replace some of the standard definition, and we're doing that right now. It's going to be a little more expensive, but since we want them all equipped, so that'll be early in the school year, the double-digit match. That was, other than high definition, we want high definition, standard definition. We have 10 buses that have standard definitions, so they all have to be...
Should we switch them up?
Okay.
But we're going to keep the cameras for standard definition lines.
Yeah.
But all our buses do have them.
So, Mr. Perzuie, last night you also updated us on, we had a significant mold issue last year, and it looks like we've had that pretty much mitigated this year in our high school locker rooms.
Yes.
And how did you accomplish that?
We have multiple dehumidifiers operating in those team rooms now. They are, most of them, I mean, I don't think the ones in the coach's office, but I know the ones out in the main areas are piped directly to the drains, so they run constantly. A lot of the times, if, if that's not the case, what'll happen is the dehumidifier will run and then it'll get full, and it'll shut off. And then it's doing nothing for however long it is till someone goes in there and empties it. So, I believe that was a big help. Some fans are operating in there to help move the air around. I think that helps as well. And I believe it was two Fridays ago, I did meet with Alyssa from McClure, and she had some engineers, and they were walking through there to, and I discussed the problem with them and the need for some sort of dehumidification system in there, an actual, you know, rooftop unit, or, you know, some sort of a permanent dehumidification solution for there. So, you know, she took some drawings, and she walked through with the engineers, and I showed them the layout. So they're, they're sort of working on that too, along with the overall presentation to the district. So, looking for a more permanent solution for that.
And then just the other issue, you had alluded to the HVAC for Reifton. Is it, was it right, which, which, the HVAC you talked about?
The junior high chiller?
Yes, the junior high chiller. So, so you are, you, you talked that we're pushing that back to October, but it's limping into October.
Well, that wasn't pushed back to October. That was always on, on for October because you're not, you know...
But you don't know if it's going to make it till October. Was that the question?
It's going to make it. I'll make it, make it.
Okay. So, what would the timeline then be for the work, and would it be disruptive during the school year to do that, and do you need that?
The timeline for the work, I mean, I'm pretty sure the preliminary conversations I had were looking at probably a January completion. Obviously, it wouldn't be complete, complete, because they would need to be able to test the system in the spring to make sure it's, it's operating. So, it wouldn't be completely closed out, but the majority, substantial completion would probably be in January. As far as interruption, I don't believe that'll be the case. The, the equipment's located in the roof and then in the mechanical room below the main office, off to the right of the front entrance there, which is accessible from outside, you know. Contractor probably shouldn't even need to enter the building ever. So, that...
Thank you.
Yep.
Now, you talk about Owatton Creek, and they have different lights and solar panels and things like that on your roof, don't they?
I believe there's only one set of solar panels. I think it controls the lights in the lobby area, from what I understand, but I'm not 100% sure on that.
I thought we had, we had a whole setup on most, good portions of the roof, I thought, that's a real, but that was not, that was designed before last year.
That's a pretty steep slanted roof. I haven't been up on too much of it.
When McClure goes through, they'll look at all of that and give us an analysis of how they can actually improve it.
And how plug, how exposure to it.
Any other questions from Mr. Perzuie? Thank you, Rob.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
Take care. Okay, we're going to move on to, I report the agenda minutes, and recommended that the board of school directors approve the minutes from the July 16, 2019 voting meeting. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Treasurer's report, Mrs. Gage.
Does anyone have any questions about treasurer's report? Just one month of activity, nothing
So it's recommended the board of directors approve the treasurer's report for July 2019 and payment requests for 719, or 717, 19 through 8, 2019. Second, any discussion?
The only question I have, and did we get a final treasurer's report for 2019 to 2020? If I recall correctly, and I may have just wrong, when we were at the voting meeting in July, it said that part of it was incomplete because we were waiting on some of the final things to come in. I may be remembering that wrong. Can you just address that quick?
Well, the final report for 1819 will be the one.
Okay, I see. Thank you.
Any additional discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Word policies, it's recommended that the board of school directors approve the following policies. Policies that are numbered one through six for second reading, policies that are numbered seven through 12 for first reading, and policy numbered 13 is marked for deletion. Any discussion?
So, are there no more fax machines in Roppongari?
It's all scanned up. Yeah. I don't, I don't think it necessarily means that there's no fax machines per se, but I, I, there probably isn't.
Well, we may have one. There's a, there's a fax function built into the copy machine, I believe.
Yeah.
Do you use the copy machine?
But PSBA's sense was that it wasn't sufficient to really merit a unique policy. Any additional discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Business functions, Mr. Gill.
Thanks, Al, for your hand, burger. Recommend the board of school directors approve the following business function items, number one through six listed in the agenda.
Any, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Gill. Personal committee, Mr. Japine.
Okay. I'm going to make a couple of changes here based on a few requests. So, we're going to do a, recommend the board of school directors approves or ratifies the following personnel items. I want to go to, I'll tell you what, here's what we're going to keep off the agenda for, till I bring it back. So we're going to keep off Mr. Fiddler's retirement, Mrs. Devlin's hire, Michaela Campbell, because Hunter has a conflict, and then we'll, I think I'll do, we want to keep off the revised job description for the supervisor of the math STEM position, purpose is Wilson, and then I'll be able, of course, request separate from that. So, we're going to take action on items two, all support staff except Michaela Campbell, change of status, leave of absence, and you know what, we'll, we'll do the, we'll stop there. We'll do 678, we'll do the attached list of course requests and all those things. We'll do them one by one.
Sorry. Any discussion?
Do you have that straight?
No, but we'll, we'll throw it.
Let's not miss anything.
I just want to say one thing from that list. I...
Getting some feedback. Thank you.
Mrs. Binninger was my classroom aide when I came here in 2000, and I was just really happy to see that she's here on the list and going to be working full-time at the computer lab at Lorraine, just to show her dedication, dedication to the district for somebody here. So, just happy to be back there.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries.
So, it is recommended the board of school directors approves or ratifies the following personnel items, the retirement, certified staff, Joseph R. Fiddler, fifth grade teacher at Reifton School, retiring effective August 19th, 2019.
Second, any discussion?
Yes. Mr. Fiddler, Joe, I'd like to thank you for everything. I'm sorry you're leaving us right now. I know that probably wasn't your decision initially, but I hope that everything goes well in the future, and wish you the best.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I certainly second that too, Joe, and just, I hope you have many, many years of happy retirement. You certainly deserve it. You've put in many, several years in this district. I don't know how many years it is now, Joe. Is it over 35?
It's, it would've been 35 this year.
Would've been 35 this year. So, it's an amazing, it's an amazing career. Thank you so much for everything you've done.
Thank you. Thank you, Dave.
Yeah. I just want to say thank you to Mr. Fiddler. He was my fifth grade science teacher. So, thank you very much, and enjoy your retirement.
Thanks.
And I'm going to join in too, because you were also my fifth grade teacher. Not my teachers necessarily, my name, when I remember you, so thank you.
The kids may be old now.
You are not my fifth grade teacher, so, but ju, just ruler his. Thanks, sir. No, I just want to say, I, I know, I've only been here for a few years, but we've had a good relationship. You were always for the kids, and, you know, as I said to you in our, in our email exchange, you know, you're always welcome. So we hope to see you around a little bit longer.
Thank you.
In the classrooms. I meant that, in the classroom.
I appreciate your, your support with, came on all of a sudden, and thank you for your help and, and thank the board for, especially for your kind comments. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries.
It's recommended the board of school directors approves or ratifies the following personnel items. Under appointments, administrative staff, Melissa S. Devlin, supervisor of literacy and ESL, replacing Julie Klein at a salary of $92,000, effective August 26, 2019, pending receipt of required documentation.
Second, any discussion?
Mrs. Devlin's here. We had an opportunity to meet her prior to this meeting. I don't know if you'd like.
Typically, at this point, well, we're going to wait until we do the vote, and then we'll have her say something.
Yeah, I would just like to say as part of the discussion, how, how difficult it is to replace Julie Klein, and we're just so delighted to have someone of Melissa's caliber, Julie, to come in and replace, and I think it'll be seamless, and I think it really means so much to us as a district to have someone of your talent to, to join us. Any, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries.
Okay.
Melissa?
I'm sorry. Yeah, I just wanted to echo what was said. I was in contact with Melissa's superintendent right next door in Antioch. It was a situation that he did not want to lose. It was just, it was, it was an economic situation. We were the beneficiary. There has been, just about anybody I've spoken to... uh, we were the beneficiary, um, there has been, just about anybody I've spoken to speaks very highly, and I think we, we kinda got a, a steal here from Antietam, so we're pleased, if you'd like to say something, please?
Uh, I'm not sure exactly what to say, I wasn't prepared for that, but, um, I'm so excited to begin this opportunity, um, you spend a lot of time looking at opportunities that are out there, and sometimes one just feels right, and every interview that I spent here at Exeter, I left feeling like this was going to be an amazing opportunity if it worked out, so I'm very excited to be here, and can't wait to get off and running first thing tomorrow morning, so thank you, thank you for the opportunity.
See you bright and early.
Bright and early.
It's recommended the Board of School Directors approves or ratifies the following personnel items, Michaela A. Campbell, hard time special education learning support aide at Lorraine Elementary, replacing Jordan Nieheiser, working four hours per day at a rate of $11.50 an hour, effective August 26th, 2019.
Any discussion?
I just wanna say quick, um, I notified the Board of an existing conflict that I have, um, I don't think it's a legal conflict, but out of the evidence of caution, I wanted to make everybody aware, uh, that I have a familial relation to Michaela, um, I think that she'll do a tremendous job, but I will be abstaining from the vote.
Thank you, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions?
Abstain.
Thank you. Motion carries.
It's recommended the Board of School Directors approves or ratifies the following personnel items, um, this would be number 11.
What, no, it's number six, right?
Six, I'm sorry, yes, um, number six, the, we can actually go from six through 10 since nobody had an objection, six.
Mr. Arns, are you gonna pull out a number six?
They need to do the request, yeah.
Right. Okay, so let's do six, then.
Well, do you just wanna do sixes first, and then the rest of them?
Sure.
Whatever works.
So, let me, let me read this again, so that we're all on the same page here. It's recommended the Board of School Directors approves or ratif- ratifies the following personnel items, under the attached list of course requests, first approving Mrs. Haller's request.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions?
Abstain.
Motion carries.
It's recommended the Board of School Directors approves or ratifies the following personnel items, the attached list of course requests minus Dr. Haller.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
It's recommended the Board of School Directors approves or ratifies the following personnel item, being the attached list of staff conferences.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
It's recommended the Board of School Directors approves or ratifies the following changes in the daily pay rates for certified substitute teachers and retired Exeter certified substitute teachers.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
It's recommended the Board of School Directors approves or ratifies raising the cafe worker's substitute rate from $9 an hour to $10 an hour effective with the start of the 2019-2020 school year.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
It's recommended the Board of School Directors approves an increase in the recording secretary's stipend from $105 per meeting to $108 per meeting for the 2019-2020 school year.
Second. Any discussion?
I just wanna say quick that, you know, just thank you, Jennifer, for bearing with us, um, I, I imagine it would be very frustrating to break out each and every different motion tonight, but, but thank you for being here over this past year.
Thank you.
I have to agree, I think Jennifer's doing a great job.
Mine would be well.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries.
It's recommended the Board of School Directors approve the revised job description for the supervisor of math, of the math STEM position.
Second. Any discussion?
Yes, I pulled this, um, just cause I looked, and the only thing that we changed was that the supervisory certificate would be is preferred instead of is expected, and that's just because we've gotten no interest or very little.
Well, we've, we've gotten three candidates to this, we've brought forward, one that we're, we're very happy with, another one that we weren't happy with, so rather than go forward with one candidate, um, we've actually had some teachers reach out and say that they'd be interested, so we're looking to see what kinda pull will, pull, a pull we will grow, um, from the preferred, and then measure it out and see, if we have a candidate we feel that is more appropriate, that doesn't have a certificate, we can, we can move forward with that person.
Okay, thank you.
Could I, could I assume too, that, you know, if that person's hired, it would be with the condition, under the expectation, that they would obtain that certificate?
And that would be the case, yes, it would be discussed with them prior to the offer.
So it's not prerequisite, it's just an expectation of the positions?
Yes, yes.
And just to build off that, would that affect the salary schedule for how, not the schedule, that's probably the wrong word, but the starting salary and the movement there, and when they would get their certification, or would they start in the same rate that we're currently?
Certification isn't tied to the salary rate, but yes, we would discuss that.
Okay. Any additional discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
It's recommended the Board of School Directors approves or ratifies memorandum of understanding between the Exeter Township School District and the Exeter Township Education Association, PSDA-NEA, effective July 1st, 2019, through June 30th, 2020, to initiate the creation of cyber school courses.
Any discussion? I wanna say, um, that I know this is an important step for us in the, in our cyber process, and I, and I wanna recognize the work that Patrick has done in conjunction with the association to, to kinda make this memorandum come through, cause I know it wasn't easy. Any additional discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Chapina. Nice job. Student functions, Mrs. Stratt.
There is a report for a non-resident student for 2019, 2020 for the agenda, and it is recommended that the Board of School Directors approve the following student function items, I'm gonna do one through three, and then five through nine.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries.
It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approve the following student functions item, number four.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
One.
Okay. Motion carries. One abstention. Thank you, Mrs. Stratt. Athletic committee, Mr. Arns.
Just a quick report, um, I'm just gonna read from Tom's email, uh, because there hasn't been a whole lot going on that we've seen in the public view, but they have been preparing, um, for the upcoming seasons, so, Tom just wanted to share with all of us that high school sports started practices August 12th, junior high fall sports will start next Monday, um, the first ball contest is coming up on Friday, August 23rd, at Burke's Catholic, it'll be a varsity football game, um, today the Exeter Karen Foundation came in and gave a presentation to all of our high school fall athletes, where they talked about peak performances, which is where they're looking at the traditional prevention program, um, for, uh, some of the health-related challenges, um, they also discussed team culture and positive communication, healthy minded, healthy bodies, uh, and also nicotine abating and the challenges of those composed to athletes, um, so, all good news as far as I'm concerned, um, I'm not sure if anybody else has anything to add, but I think we'll have a good year.
Thank you, Mr. Arns. Curriculum committee, Dr. McClendon.
So, curriculum committee met latest Tuesday, uh, the 13th, and Dr. Winters went over, uh, the curriculum goals for the 2019-2020 school year, and those goals included, uh, using data to inform decision-making, there's a, uh, we're gonna, uh, learn to use a, uh, software, a data software called On Hands, and there'll be professional development in October, and then also, uh, uh, Dr. Winters went over professional development, and that includes, uh, not only looking at data, but how to implement and use it to inform classroom instruction, and there were, um, for the students, there's a instructional software, that was pretty cool, called Legends of Learning, Dr. Winters was very excited about that.
Good question.
So that's, that's gonna be for the, for grades three through eighth, and I, that's just for one year so far, it's purchased for one year. Did you wanna say anything about that?
Sure, so, in June, uh, Dr. Phillips and I went to ISTI, which is a national technology conference, it was in Philadelphia, and Legends of Learning was there doing a presentation, very, very exciting, cause it's very gamified, and it's kinda superhero-based, and so, they caught our attention, you know, you walk through this huge exhibit hall, and there's stuff everywhere, and it caught our attention, and we sat down, listened to the presentation, and essentially what they do is, um, people create games that Legends of Learning curates, their games in math and science for students in grades three through eight, that are aligned to the standards, that can be used to gamify and supplement some of the work that happens in the classroom, and so, um, we were able to get a site license, uh, for the district, at a very reasonable rate for one year, we were able to use existing 18, 19 federal Title IV dollars to pay for it, and so, we're gonna be using it this year, uh, building capacity with teachers, even trying to take a very kinda secretive, let's get excited, superhero kind of approach, we've got some cool, good art and ideas, and I won't spill the beans too much on that, but, um, we've got some really cool ideas, and, and I will say, that idea that I shared was, a teacher had that idea, Dr. Phillips and I were like, "That's awesome, we gotta take that in mind a bit," um, but it's a really, really cool, you know, software tool that's gonna help teachers, and it's one of those things, it's just kind of an extra thing that you can use, we're gonna, uh, get access for our second grade teachers, so that those students in second grade that need to move a little bit faster can, can use it at that level, we're gonna get some access for our ninth grade teachers, so that students that maybe are a little bit behind in math can use it that way, uh, really, really neat tool, and very, very excited about it.
And the idea behind it is they're capitalizing on the kids, they wanna play video games, so rather than playing a mindless game, these are actually educational games, and then there was a presentation showing it was whole numbers, but it's spaceship, and you can only shoot the whole numbers and blast them into the sky, there were some other things we saw, so it, it's gonna, um, kinda go where the kids wanna be.
And I failed miserably at that game, cause I'm not a gamer, all of the committee members laughed at me, cause I couldn't figure out how to maneuver the, yeah.
Is that, you mentioned that we might be able to look at that?
Yeah, yeah, I can get access for you guys, sure. Yep, I couldn't do that.
And, um, so our next meeting, that is September 10th.
Doctor McClendon, does it look like I just add something that I just wanted to mention? Um, um, Dr. Winters talked a lot about professional development as well, and one thing he talked about is the way that he's tiered the professional development, so that, um, it was district-wide, um, for everyone on the in-service days, and then building-wide professional development on early dismissal days, and then the flex days where teachers, they had a choice, um, and I just really like those tiers, but also, I just wanted to, and sometimes I still hear parents concerned about those early dismissal days, and I know we've made a lot less this year, but, um, just, you know, I, to see how it fits into the whole plan, I think that's good for parents to understand, this is the time when your teachers in their buildings get to work together, so I think that's important for the community to know.
Like, then we can surely roll it out during community forums.
Thank you very much, and thank you, Mrs. Stratt. Or, I mean, Dr. McClendon. Uh, so is committee, Mr. Brady.
As was this, mentioned by Mr. Chapina yesterday evening, we had a facilities committee meeting, we were gonna cover a few items, besides the CLOR group, we also had the initial conversation regarding the recycling program within the district, and one item that we identified was, it's really more of an item that goes back to our food services group, and their purchases and the items they have, there may be already contracts in place that will restrict making massive changes, but at this time, it would be good to work with them to find out where they are, and what can be changed, and also to look at active programs within our schools as far as where there are recyclable plastics, can we diminish that, where it could be possibly putting in some kinda, different kinda water fountain, whether reverse osmosis treatment, we're looking into that for costs, where students could use that in some kind of refillable bottle, and still having to get water bottles, we're also looking at where are the locations of those trash cans next to, um, purchases, for example, if you go down the hallway here, you'll see there's, there's a beverage dispensing group, and right next there's a recycling can, so, is that common practice, is that a rarity, so, we're starting to look at that, the se- the third thing that we did was, we started the investigation of the Laos administration building for the actual layout of the building, now, we've been living here for about seven to eight years, plus minus, after we moved over from our old administration building, it's now time to possibly look at more of it as a permanent residence, instead of temporary residence, so in doing that, we started the walk-around, um, look at every one of the people's environments, we went to Susan's, we looked at HSRs, we looked at the accounting group, we looked at the superintendents, et cetera, and that's why I'm seeing next to these nice plans, which I'm going to take back to my office and get some of them scanned, um, going to sit down with a couple of architects and just think through it, um, see if there's anything we can theoretically put together, and maybe that can be a launching point for doing other changes in the future, so I think we're in the early stages of that, I think this is probably gonna be several months, if I, maybe it's around past year, but at least it'll give us a game plan. That was the report for this evening, other, we'll be getting together on the 17th, on the 19th of September, to talk with the CLOR group about their findings.
Great, thank you, Mr. Brady. Personnel committee, Mr. Chapina.
I think we had enough personnel committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chapina.
No church and state, Jared.
Policy committee, nothing to report as well. Student functions committee, Mrs. Stratt. No report. Uh, technology committee, Mrs. Page.
Um, the student Chromebook distribution sessions were held on August 12th and 20th, in order to have their devices to be ready for the start of school, remaining students will get their devices once they return. Network security updates, including the resets of all student passwords, have taken place this summer, computer labs and resources throughout the district are prepared and ready for another successful year, so I think the technology department has done a great job to get these kids ready from the first day that they come back to school to use technology to their advantage, that's my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Page. Next over to Community Education Foundation, Mrs. Wilson.
This is hot off the press, I really just got it 20 minutes ago, so, um, from Amy Leetz, thanks to our community and supporters, ECF netted nearly 28,000 at our golf tournament on August 2nd, in memory of Mr. Roy Underhill, we thank our 92 golfers, 66 sponsors, the countless auction donors, event volunteers, and planning committee, an impromptu contest at the end of the day brought in $470 for the junior high schools Girls That Code Club in conjunction with their fall planned Dream Girls Coding Event, we'd like to take a moment and thank the driving force behind our golf tournament for the last four years, Mrs. Angela Cook and Mr. Eddie Yoder, after raising nearly $100,000 in their four years at the Wheeler, turning the reins of the golf event over to new leaders, we're eternally grateful to Aunt and Eddie, not sure who the new leaders yet are though. ECF and the Alumni Association's brick and bench project at the Wanamaker Eagle is complete as of today, looks great, and we're proud to complete Phase 1 this year, the project will open again in late winter for new brick orders, um, they can be for graduation, memorials, or honorarium gifts, and close in late spring with Phase 2 install occurring late summer 2020, the wishing well on the hill, dubbed the Eagle's Nest, was installed last week, ECF and the alumni are planning a small event on the hill for the first home football game to celebrate the project and to remember Tony Kroll, over 30 advertiser signs for the Eagle's Nest have been purchased- Over thirty advertiser signs for the Eagle's Nest have been purchased by area businesses and community members. Channel sixty-nine news came to the hill yesterday to highlight both the well at the Eagle's Nest and the Wanamaker Eagle Brick Project. Last but not least, ECF would like to welcome our newest board member, Mrs. Peggy Gumbert, a recently retired Exeter teacher and active community member. We thank Mrs. Gumbert for her eagerness to roll up her sleeves and once again positively impact our Exeter students and community. And if anybody has any questions or anything specific, you can always contact Amy. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mrs. Wilson. First career in tech center, Dr. McCullough.
We did not meet in July, so.
No meal?
No meal either.
BCIU Board of Directors, I'll speak to that. We had our meeting last Thursday. And a couple of things at that meeting I just wanted to mention. Ed Mahalik, who is, I think, well-known throughout the county as the mental health administrator for the county, was, was awarded the Outstanding Community Partner Award. And he's a really impressive guy. I know probably several of you know Dr. Mahalik. But, you know, he was, I think it was a great recognition and, and well-deserved. We also were introduced to Bill Gleason, who is their new Safety and Security Program Administrator for the BCIU. Real impressive guy who, not only physically imposing kind of a guy, but a really fascinating background and resume, most of it in police work. And his priorities for the year will be crisis and emergency response planning, school safety and security assessments, and training and exercises. And I know Sue will probably be running into Bill frequently. I think she'll be very impressed. He seems like, I think they were lucky to kinda find somebody with this background. We did receive legislative updates, which we do periodically. And there was a lot of emphasis on charter school legislation that is being considered by both the governor and the legislature. And also, we had an update in terms of the school districts that were pretty much all opting out of the flexible instructional day program throughout the area, at least the county. It looks like there may be still maybe four districts within the region that might be considering it. But it's, it doesn't seem as if it's a real popular area because of, I guess, all the conditions and expectations associated with that.
Yeah, there's a lot of strings that aren't really being discussed at this point that would adversely impact the district. So we will not be participating.
And then finally, I just wanna say I attended the BCIU opening day. Twelve hundred employees came to Yellenburg High School. And the featured speaker was twenty-five-year-old Adam Blank, who was identified as mildly autistic, has albinism, speech impairment, and a vision impairment. And he spoke, I think, really, it was a fascinating profile of a young man who was, was the beneficiary of all the work of his local intermediate unit in Pennsylvania for sixteen years. They helped, really a boy who was pretty much non-verbal for the first five years of his life and who had vision problems and obviously with autism's real challenges. And, and went through bullying issues and all that sort of thing. And now he is a motivational public speaker, which is really fascinating to see. So the twelve hundred employees who were there today, and many of them who were in early childhood education, I think really had a great opportunity to kinda see what the potential is for the, the work that they do every day. So it was, it was an excellent program at Yellenburg this morning. That's the end of my BCIU report. Legislative liaison, Mr. Gill.
Doctor Humbert, once again, I'm gonna avert to Dr. Phillips because I'm sure that he's gonna talk about things that I would. So I don't understand.
Sure. So we'll wait to, to your report. Are there just something you wanna report right now?
I wasn't prepared to talk about legislative reports, but that's okay.
I just figured you were, you were gonna talk about, you know, the charter school and all that kind of stuff.
I can pick about, yes.
I, I will say, if anybody's interested, I can, I can certainly forward the, the BCIU legislative report, which is pretty comprehensive. And I think it's, it's always an interesting read. It comes out monthly. And if you guys don't see it, you probably don't. I get it. I can forward it if people be interested in, in getting that report. I won't go through it at this meeting, but if you're interested, I'll, I'll just send it along. Township Borough Liaison, Mr. Chapina.
Thank you. I had a meeting with some of the leadership from the township just to sort of get an overview on a variety of different issues, including the development in the giant supermarket area that they have acquired. I don't know if they finally executed on that agreement yet. I know they were still doing some due diligence. I won't get into all of the details because some of that is just kind of in development. And that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Chapina. I, I just wanna make one final report on behalf of the Ad hoc Transportation Committee. We do have a committee meeting scheduled for Thursday. It's my understanding that Dr. McCullough will be available by phone to help walk us through. Is that right, Anne?
Yes, definitely by phone. I did follow up with another email saying, can you make the trip? But I don't.
Okay. I mean, we prefer him to be here, but if he can't, I think by phone would be good. And, and we did get some feedback from Dr. McCullough after his opportunity meeting with Anne on Oklahoma State to kinda review the RFPs. And, you know, we'll have a chance to kinda discuss the outcome of his, of his review and recommendations. And I'll just say, you know, very, very briefly and without any discussion because this is really, I think our discussion really will take place on Thursday. But it, it did not look very promising for contracting with the two RFPs that were provided. They appeared to come in a little higher than we would expect them to be relative to our current expenditures for the district. But that's, that remains a topic for further discussion on Thursday and review with Dr. McCullough. So he can explain to us, I think, more thoroughly the outcome of the RFPs and the nature of his recommendation.
Mr. President, what time is the meeting going to be? Six o'clock?
Six o'clock on Thursday.
Or seven.
Which one is it?
Or is it seven?
There's a difference.
Okay. Six o'clock on Thursday. And we'll be in the PD month?
I think that's correct.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
So we'll move to superintendent's report. And I know we have an opening day for staff tomorrow, so.
Yes, we do. Well, I'm gonna first touch on the legislative report. Three big areas that are really out there right now is the charter school reform. Governor Wolf has made some recommendations that would deal with the area of funding, funding formula, deal with, with the reimbursement numbers, some of the issues of accountability, as well as transparency. As it is right now, there's not a lot of transparency from the organizations that run those schools. So that, that's something that is down in Harrisburg. I will tell you that the legislators I speak to, there's not a lot of traction for that. There's a, there's a strong lobby in the charter, cyber charter schools community. But at least it's, it's being tried by the governor right now.
And Senator Tomlinson. Don't leave him out.
The next piece is the school tax reform legislation that is now, again, recirculating. There are some bills down there that are, that are being pushed through the, through the hallways. We'll see where that goes. And lastly, as Dr. Humbert talked about, is the school flexible instructional days. It sounds like a really good idea at first. In fact, in our leadership weeks, we spent quite a bit of time figuring out what it would look like from us if we did something like this. We came as a group and we decided that we would pilot it. Then we had a presentation from a lawyer who discussed the perils of trying to do something like that and the damage that it would do not providing the services for students as are needed on a daily basis. So in circling back, we decided that we will not be participating. We will see where this leads with the courts before we, we jump in. As, as mentioned, we do have an opening day tomorrow, but we started on Friday with ninth grade orientation at the high school. I spoke to the students on the importance of finding their career path, working with their school counselors to explore their four years and find out really where they wanna go. I also stressed how quickly those four years will go by and that they should take advantage of them. There was some excitement and a little bit of apprehension in the auditorium. But Mr. Campbell and his team did a nice job of allaying fears as well as setting expectations for the class of 2023. Specifically tomorrow, we have our opening day activity starting at seven forty-five AM at the high school, which is, which includes registration. And there's some breakfast treats. All board members are invited to attend. The activities will start at eight-thirty, will conclude right around eleven-thirty, twelve o'clock, depending on how long our speaker goes. We will hear from introducing our new staff from our building leaders. We'll hear from the Exeter Community Education Foundation recognizing the grant winners that they provide for our teachers. We will go over the necessary logistics. And as I mentioned, we will end the morning with our keynote address. Our special guest speaker is Dr. Ron Whitaker. He'll be speaking to our staff on the topics of diversity and equity. Our leadership team heard from him not last summer, but the summer prior on that very same topic. We came away very impressed with him. He is an expert in the area. It's where his expertise lies in what he handles for Cabrini-Collbix, where he is, I think it's University now, where he works. After the morning activities, the staff will report to their assigned areas for different trainings and meetings. And then on Thursday, our teaching staff will report to their buildings for more meetings. Friday is kind of an off day for the staff. And then everything takes off on Monday, August twenty-sixth, with our first day. As Mr. Perzui has been discussing, and I've, I've talked to him at length about this, we are completing our final touches on our buildings and grounds. And we'll be ready for the students when they arrive on Monday. We will be doing our walkthroughs in the buildings we do every year to make sure that is happening. As Mr. Aaron's talked about, the sports teams are hard at work in getting ready for the upcoming fall season. I can hear from my office that the band is also in good form and ready to take the field this fall. I have run into some teachers in the past few weeks, and they are excited about starting school. I've had some of the same discussions with students, and they do not share those feelings, but some are excited as well. Across our district, we have lost some people to retirements and resignations. We brought on some new faces, a very talented, passionate group. If anybody attended the induction services for the twenty-one staff members, I interview every one of the people that come on board. And every interview, they're excited, they're knowledgeable, they're passionate, and they're ready to go. So we have a good group coming on this year. We also have some old faces in new places. But most importantly, we do have our teaching positions filled going into the first year, beginning of the year. So as a district, we are looking forward to a great year. That is my report.
Dr. Phillips, can I ask a question? Are you seeing any easing of filling teacher positions? Because I know the last couple of years, we've been saying it's very difficult.
It continues to be difficult. As I've said on many occa, on many occasions, the, the pool is very shallow. The, the teaching profession, and everything goes in cycles, but the teaching profession has gone down to the point Alvernia will no longer have a secondary education program. Sixty-five percent less graduates are graduating from our teacher colleges. We used to be the state system. It, it is just, for various reasons, becoming a, a profession that not a lot of students are going into. Some of that has to do with, you know, this whole millennial thing that they want instant gratification. They don't stay in the professions long enough. If that's not intended, but if you'll take it, you can have it. But really, what it comes down to, my discussions with the teachers that are taking the jobs, it is their vocation, it is their passion, it is their life's work. So the people that are in it are, are excited. They wanna be in it. People are no longer dipping their toe in to see if this is a profession they want. They're going different private routes. We will see about retention. I think once you're in the profession, the retention numbers are better. Because I think at this point, people that are in the profession are in it to stay. But yes, we're interviewing, I don't know how many, it must have been about four or five long-term sub-teachers. We offered them, they accepted, and then they were given a contract by another school district that had an opening. So, you know, what used to be long-term sub-teachers are now contract teachers. What used to be substitute teachers are now long-term sub-teachers. And, and we're not gonna be the only district, but again, trying to find substitute teachers will be yeoman's work. But again, you know, from our district's perspective, people wanna come here. When I interview them, they say they're happy to be here. They wanna be here. You heard that from Mrs. Del. So that, that's a plus for us when we try to go out there and recruit.
Thank you, Dr. Phillips. Are there any board members who desire to be heard at this time?
Dave, I just have two quick items. One, Vinnie Van Conne, who's the township supervisor, who's the liaison to the school district, was also the electrician who volunteered his time to do the lights at the high school, the Wanamaker Eagle. So I just wanted to acknowledge him for contributing his time to do that. And then secondly, I just wanted to mention to the board, through a relationship that I have with the Pennsylvania Human Relations Commission, they're creating a Berks Advisory Board, and Dr. Phillips has been into that.
Any else, Allison?
I just have one thing to say. Today was our opening day at Twin Valley. And one of our goals this year is to provide an outstanding, our last goal, provide an outstanding educational experience to our students and the value it brings to our community. And in, in sharing that goal with us, they put up on the screen how many hours of community service the students do for the community that they live in. They put up on the screen how many hours they actually work through the different partnerships with that program that the, I don't know what it's called.
Career.
Career pathways, yes, the career pathways. They do how many of our students went into the armed forces and are serving to protect our country now? What colleges they're going to, and then what they're gonna come back and how they're gonna serve our, hopefully, serve the community with their education. So I just thought it was a really great way of thinking about it. When we're talking about providing an education to our students, what are they gonna come back and do for our community? So I was hoping that maybe this year, that's one thing that we could look at, is look at our graduates and see what they're going out and doing.
I actually did that in my first graduation speech four years ago, I guess it was. And it was amazing that multiple thousands of hours of community service our students do, all the services. So yes, that's something we can do. As well as, I'll just point out that Dr. Winters and I'll be going to a con, a conference for Portrait of a Graduate. It's through a leader twenty-one group. And it has to do with, the, the whole idea is a comprehensive planning. It's a new way of looking at comprehensive planning. And it has to do with bringing the community in to focus on what we want our graduates to look like when they graduate. So that'll be something that we are up for comprehensive planning at the end of this year. So that'll be a plan that we start to put in place in the fall, having focus meetings with community members, with teachers, with parents, with, you know, all the stakeholders, developing what would be a portrait of a graduate. And the beauty of this is it's not a binder on the shelf. It is actually values and visions for our students that become a visual picture that will be hanging in our halls, that will hang in the boardroom, that will hang out throughout our school district. So we're going to that in October, and we'll be bringing that back and starting that in the district right after that. That's a good idea. Thank you.
Any other, any other board members' comments?
I, I think, you know, I wanted to ask something about our cyber school. Are, are we gonna have kids that when they go to cy, to cyber school, that they could also, if they want to have some, like, here at the school, like, say they are interested in art and they wanna take an art class, can they do some of that? Can it be flexible? Or is it just gonna be all?
No, we're not, okay.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. We're not at that point where we have a full program where students will be able to take all virtual program classes. At this point, you'll be doing a lot of brick and mortar program with taking maybe one or two classes in your, in your segment.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering.
The growth idea is yes. We want to show the community that we have what I think is a better cyber program because it'll be our teachers teaching the courses. So when the students opt to go to a cyber program, for whatever reason, they will choose the Exeter cyber program with our teachers, our curriculum. If they choose to take one class, they can do that. If they choose to do all cyber, they can do that. But they will be able to participate in our sports programs, our band programs, our art class. Yes, that would be, that would be the goal.
I was, I was wondering that if, once they get into cyber school, if they, you know, were, were then cut off from coming back and maybe taking something here in the brick and mortar.
Absolutely. And we've also, I've also had some preliminary discussions with some of the surrounding superintendents that, you know, at a reasonable rate, not what happens at cyber programs, that that we would allow them to pay tuition if they wanted to take our cyber programs.
Thank you, Doctor.
If there are no other comments, I just want to say that, remind board members that we have a board retreat scheduled for next Tuesday, the twenty-seventh, at six PM, and it'll be at.
Six PM, stop.
It'll be at the, if you come, you'll be late for dinner at seven.
You will be late for dinner.
And it'll be at the Watten Creek Elementary School, but you'll get a notification.
And we'll give you more information.
Yep. And if there are no other comments, we'll accept a motion for adjournment. Motion. We are adjourned. Thank you very much.